Good evening, I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of Norman Public Schools Board of Education. Ms. Jill, would you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Regiers.
Yes.
Ms. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Collier.
Yes.
Tonight, we have a special presentation of Stella O'Hara and Smith O'Hara to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if they can come down front and we can all rise, please, honor our country and our state.
Mr. O'Hara, you're gonna come down here for us?
Okay.
Good. Ready? One, two, three.
Attention, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the
I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma, it's symbols of peace to all peoples.
Thank you. Everybody's gonna come down, we're gonna take some pictures. Your brother would've got one of these, but he's not here. So, you notice that Okay? So, the one right here.
That's what?
Okay? Let me guys stand behind me.
Of course.
Next on the agenda is a resolution presented by Dawn Brockman.
This is a resolution to affirm the board's commitment to the education, safety, and privacy of all students, whereas the board recognizes the local concerns for public education raised by the national debate on implementation and enforcement of current immigration laws, and hereby intends to alleviate these concerns while also carrying out its duties as set forth by law and board policies. Whereas, the mission of the district is to prepare and inspire all students to achieve their full potential, which can only be accomplished by access to quality education that enables them to fully participate now and in the future in the social, economic, and educational opportunities in our community, state, and nation. And this mission is grounded in the conviction that knowledge is essential for the welfare of Oklahoma and for the preservation of the liberties and rights of Oklahoma citizens. Whereas, the district must, as required by law, provide equal educational opportunities to all individuals residing within its jurisdiction or geographic boundaries, and denying enrollment based on immigration status to children who are not legally admitted into the United States has been held by the United States Supreme Court to violate the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas, the district is responsible pursuant to public education objectives and core beliefs stated in board policy for the education and physical and emotional safety of every student. Whereas, the district is a place for students to seek support related to immigration-related event that interferes or disrupts their learning environment. Whereas, the board is dedicated pursuant to its commitments stated in board policy to ensuring a safe learning and working environment for all students and employees. Whereas, the district does not collect information related to a student's immigration status and is otherwise committed to preserving pursuant to board policy the privacy of student information. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the board hereby affirms its commitment to students, parents, and guardians that the district shall fully implement and enforce its board policies as required by law to ensure the education and safety of students and to safeguard the privacy of student information, and be it further resolved that the board authorizes the superintendent to take necessary action to ensure students, parents, and guardians are informed regarding available resources for assistance in understanding and exercising their rights under applicable law.
Thank you, Dawn. Ms. Jill, do we have any public comment?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a I make a motion to accept the purchase orders and approve the consent docket, items A through K as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Jill.
Mr. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Regiers.
Yes.
Ms. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Collier.
Yes.
Next is Agenda Item 6A, which is renovations and additions update for Kennedy Eisenhower, Jackson, and Truman Elementary Schools. This is presented by Mr. Milner and I believe Kennedy.
Yes. All right. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Millerino, this item is for information. As Kennedy makes her way to the podium, all four of these projects being presented this evening are for the 2023 bond and are at the construction document phase, which means the next time that you see us talk about these four sites, we'll be bringing you bids for your approval at that time. So, that'll be a little bit longer. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kennedy.
Hello. I'm so glad to be here with you guys again. Okay, so, we're gonna start with Kennedy Elementary. Kennedy's gonna be receiving an addition and renovation during the 2023 bond work. So, the addition will include five, will include five classrooms, one of which will be the steam room. And then, for typical classrooms, it'll also include a multi-user restroom bank and then single-user restrooms as well. The renovation will be doing flooring upgrades throughout their main entry corridor to provide a cohesive look throughout the school and tie it in with the rest of their aesthetic that they have at that school. We'll be doing restroom renovations, which will provide more single-user and ADA-accessible restrooms at the school. Tile wainscoting throughout the corridors, as well as providing windows at the admin offices to provide better visibility for people entering in and approaching the school for all the admin. And then, we'll also be doing ADA-stage access at the stage in their gymnasium at Kennedy. And so, this will just make it where all students or teachers, anyone in a wheelchair needing ADA access will be able to access that. They'll also be getting some site improvements, and so, that'll include additional parking at the bus loop. This is a conceptual rendering of the addition, and so, over to the right is the 2023 bond addition that we're proposing, and then, over to the left is how we will be tying it in and providing a cohesive look between the 2019 materiality and the 2023. And then, this is from the other angle, so this addition will be tying in to that 2019 addition, which was the storm shelter, as well as the existing school, and so, we really want it to be seamless throughout both areas and connecting points. This is an overview of that addition area. So, again, just tying in all the materiality, interior and exterior from the existing school and what we've done in the 2014-2019 bonds and carrying that out through these new classrooms and connecting corridors to create that cohesive look and style for the school. So, you can see this larger classroom over here on the right will serve as their steam room, and then, the four typical classrooms over on the left, kind of separated by that restroom bank. And this is a conceptual rendering of that steam room, again, with the school's colors, tying it in, and also sticking with the district's kind of standards that we've laid out for steam rooms. And then, just a view down that connecting corridor of the new addition. Moving on now to Eisenhower Elementary.
Hey, Kennedy. Kennedy, hang on just one second. We'll take him if there's any questions.
So, yes.
That way, we don't have to go back. So, any questions about Kennedy? All the flooring's hard surface, no carpet tiles?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. It'll all be VCT hard tile, so. And then, moving on to Eisenhower, they'll be receiving a renovation as well as some site improvements. One of the major parts of the Eisenhower renovation is the new classroom millwork. At this site, many of the classrooms don't have permanent cabinetry and millwork, and so, we'll be providing that in this bond for the teachers and storage in their classrooms, which is gonna be great. And then, we will also be providing restroom upgrades to make those ADA accessible and improve the finishes there, as well as a steam room renovation in this classroom. And then, we'll be doing new paint and tile wainscoting throughout the corridors. And for Eisenhower's site improvements, we'll be adding parking to their main parking lot, which is on this north end of the building, I believe, and then, a new bus loop off of this side of the building where the 2019 addition was. And then, we'll also be doing a facade kind of upgrade. And so, at this school, with the orientation and how the main entrance isn't off of that main road, and it's kind of off to the side, we're gonna renovate and give it kind of a facelift off of that main entrance to emphasize it and make it really clear where that main entrance is, bring in some of their school colors and some new signage, and also tie in or tie back to the 2019 addition materiality and pulling some of that in over to this existing school area. And then, just a conceptual rendering of the steam room and tying in their school colors. And then, as well as wainscot and restroom upgrades, and just showing here how we're gonna be tying into what we've done previously in the 2019 to really, we wanna give that cohesive look, not mismatched throughout. Oh, any questions about Eisenhower? Okay. Then, we'll move on to Jackson Elementary. Jackson will also be a renovation project. So, we'll kind of start up here at this north side. So, on this north side of the building, we will be doing some exterior upgrades. That is one of the oldest areas of the building, and it connects directly to the 2019 addition, as well as ties into the 2014 admin addition. And so, we're gonna come in and do some just exterior finish upgrades to tie that in and give it that cohesive look, so that it doesn't look like, oh, this is new, this is new, and this is really old. And then, we'll be, at this school, they have the access to these classrooms. The kids access it by an interior courtyard of the school. It is covered, but it is not enclosed, and it's not a conditioned space. So, we'll be enclosing that space and conditioning it so that the students aren't going into an exterior space to access their classrooms, coming to and from other classes and the restroom and things. Well, it'll still have a courtyard in that, outside of that corridor. The school loves those courtyards and use them frequently, so we're gonna make sure that we maintain some of that space for them to utilize that. And then, we'll also be doing classroom upgrades at Jackson. These upgrades will include new ceilings, new lighting, new paint, flooring, and millwork, so it'll be a really transformative renovation in these classrooms. We'll be doing restroom upgrades, again, to bring them to ADA compliance, as well as upgrade materiality, and as well as adding tile wainscoting down in this kindergarten and pre-K area. And then, also, just like the other schools, we'll be providing ADA access to the stage and a steam room renovation. So, this is just a conceptual view of that north side of the building where we're gonna do some exterior upgrades with the finishes to help tie it in. You can see this back area is that 2019 addition, so we're just bringing in the EFIS materiality to tie it all together. And then, this is a view from that interior courtyard. Right now, as I mentioned, it is covered, but it's not enclosed, so we'll be enclosing it with this new partition. And then, the courtyard will remain, they have like some little gardening beds and stuff in there, so they use that, and we'll be leaving that for them. And then, this is a conceptual rendering of their steam room renovation that they'll be receiving, again, tying in those school colors. Is... Yeah. Any questions about Jackson?
So, that interior courtyard, that will still be open to the sky, it looks like. It's just we're closing it off from outside access to that courtyard?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so there isn't outside access currently to that courtyard, but so, this roof is here, there's no walls, and so, if it's raining, you know, there's still rain getting in and those kids and stuff whenever they're walking to and from class. So, we'll be closing that in, but we will leave that courtyard area, so they still kind of have that outdoor classroom.
So, what you're seeing this is also a challenge, is we have to mow.
Right.
Leadership there, poor in play, that would keep the reduces obviously the issue. Their raised bed.
Yeah, no, I think it looks great.
Much attached to that courtyard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay, and then finally Truman Elementary. They'll be receiving a renovation as well as some site improvements. So, we'll start with, they're gonna receive ceiling upgrades throughout their main corridors, and that'll include new ceiling tile. Right now, it's really rough finish, and it'll give it a updated finish that'll also be more cohesive throughout the additions that we've done in the past. And as well as restroom upgrades to bring those up to ADA accessibility and a steam room renovation, as well as ADA stage access. And then, for their site improvements, the school currently doesn't, or this site doesn't have an accessible route from their ADA parking into the main entrance of the building, so we're gonna be providing that so that everyone can enter in to the front entry, and then, we're not having to provide alternative routes. And then, this is just a conceptual rendering of their steam room, similar to the others, so. Any questions on Truman or any of the others?
What's the timeline from here moving forward on these schools?
They should all kick off construction May of '26.
Three of the four sites were getting ADA improvements to give access to the stage. Was the one site that wasn't, did they already have ADA access to the stage, or is that coming at a later date?
I think I didn't mention it, but they'll all be receiving.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the info. Have a good night. Do we have any new business? No new business?
No new business.
All right, administrative staff reports.
Moved awful quick. I was not ready for that. Nope. I do have a brief report. First, I want to start off by thanking the O'Hara's for being here this evening. Great job, proud dad. They did excellent. So, Stella, Smith, great job. Give your brother a hard time, if you watch this later, for not showing up. He had a good excuse, though, I will say that. Also, want to thank Board Member Brockman for the resolution this evening. Well done. I appreciate your passion and effort put into that to, you know, once again, empower what we do, but also really focusing on students, parents, and teachers and their safety. So, thank you for that. And then, for all the kids watching, I know everybody's watching this, right? Back to school is coming in less than 30 days. August 13th is our, what? I know, they're done. They're running. But, August 13th is our first day of school. I just want to remind everybody, enrollment is actively happening. If you need help with enrollment, our enrollment center is open and serving tons of people already, very proud of that. But, July 7th through 11th, which is already happening, I can just run Uh, July seventh through eleventh, uh, which is already happening, I'm just reading my text, which is wrong here, but um. July fourteenth through sixteenth, Monday through Wednesday from eight to three P M and Monday through Wednesday. Uh, from uh five to seven P M, Monday, that does not sound right. July fourteenth through sixteenth, Monday through Wednesday, eight to three P M and Monday through Wednesday, five to seven P M, that's right. All right, so it is open and then after July sixteenth, we have in-person enrollment at the sites, so. Just let us know if you need help enrolling. Um, so then I also want to personally thank all of the people in our office who helped put this board meeting together in this agenda because. Um, w- without a board clerk right now, it's been a team effort, so to Natalie, to Jill and to Jackie and to Karen. Thank you so much for putting this together and learning the system. So that and then um the big announcement, just a reminder, power down to power up. Bell to bell, no cell, uh, is coming, if you need information on any of this stuff, including that, ask Norm on our website. And our AI bot, it will direct you to all the information on that, but that will be starting uh day one. So just looking forward to a great school year and uh getting um the opportunity to see all of our new teachers, our, I won't say old teachers, our. Uh, current teachers, um, and then our students back in our buildings, so uh looking forward to a great year.
Any Board of Education reports? Um, I have two things. Uh, one. Ms. Long, thank you. You've helped us out in many, many ways and you're riding off into the sunset, so we're we're proud of you, we're happy for you. And thank you for all of the guidance, the wisdom, uh, sometimes the debate and arguments. And uh you're good at all of that, so we uh we thank you, we appreciate all that you've done for us and done for the kids of Norman Public Schools. Yep. Uh, one last thing for me, just appreciate uh the love and support for the last two weeks, appreciate many, 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 many of you and all of you. So do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Executive Session Authority twenty five Oklahoma Statute, section three oh seven B one and B seven. To discuss candidates for the Norman High School Assistant Princip- Intern- Principal Intern Position.
Second.
Ms. Jill.
Mr. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Regiers.
Yes.
Ms. Brockman.
Yes.
Ms. Collier.
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to return to open session?
I make a motion to return to open session.
Second?